Pancake feet at Christ's King.
Yeah, I know.
There till 1:00. We're there till 1:00.
Good evening, everyone. I am Mayor Shelley Carlson. It is September 12, 2022. It's 5:30 PM. The Morehead City Council welcomes public input on issues listed on the agenda or of general community interest, time and council permitting. Speakers are limited to three minutes each. If you would like to address the council during the meeting, please fill out a form provided by the city clerk, and we will call you up during the citizens addressing the council time on the agenda. If comments were submitted to the clerk prior to the meeting via email or phone, those comments will be entered into record. For more information on participation, please visit the council meetings page on the City of Morehead website at cityofmorehead.com. We, the Morehead City Council, collectively and with gratitude acknowledge the sacred land the City of Morehead is built upon. We acknowledge the people who have resided here for generations and recognize that the spirit of the Dakota, A'Jibwe, Metis, and all Indigenous communities permeates this land. With that, Madam Clerk, could I get a roll call, please?
Shelley Dahlquist.
Here.
Matt Gilbertson.
Here.
Laura Karun.
Here.
Heather Niesemeyer.
Here.
Deb White.
Here.
Larry Selgevold.
Here.
Steve Lindos.
Here.
Chuck Hendrickson.
Here.
Mayor Shelley Carlson.
Here. And if everybody could stand, if you are able, for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, City Manager Molly, do we have any agenda amendments?
Good evening, and yes, Mayor. We have a request to move Item 12A to right under 4B due to Lisa Bodie having to make a presentation at the school board tonight.
Okay. All right, 12A will be moved then. With that, then, we will go right into recognitions and presentations. And for those watching, there is a reason that I'm wearing an orchestra jersey tonight. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Bodie to recognize the Morehead Award, More Heart Award.
Thank you, Mayor Carlson. We are recognizing Brian Cole tonight with the More Heart Award. Brian is the Director of Orchestra at Horizon Middle School. He's been teaching since 1995. And for those of you that have been on the city council a while, we had a session maybe three years ago or four years ago where we talked about the Morehead brand and, you know, what kind of person would be an archetype of Morehead. And that is really the impetus of the More Heart Award. And during that work session, one of our department directors mentioned Mr. Cole, his son's orchestra teacher, that just really represented the best Morehead had to offer and one of the reasons that he was so proud to call Morehead home. And so this is kind of a full circle moment for those of us that were working with the city council on strategic planning at that time. So we're so happy that this is an organic nomination that came from a parent in Morehead schools. So I'll share a little bit about the background of this nomination. So you may also recognize Mr. Cole from the Where the Strong Belong video. And in that video, he indicated in his remarks, "I think when you have a strong community, you are going to have a sense of belonging." And Brian has had a large impact on why many people feel that sense of belonging in Morehead. Through his efforts to create the Morehead Spud Hall of Honor, Brian is helping Morehead connect with its residents of past, present, and future. His orchestra motto is "Life Lessons Through Music," and the five values he instills in his pupils are life, joy, peace, patience, and kindness. Each of these, the motto and the values, helps kids develop necessary life skills. He also facilitates the Morehead Spud History Facebook page and provides research for the Spud History Book, a project that will commemorate the first 150 years of Morehead area public schools. That project was commissioned by the Morehead Legacy Education Foundation, where Brian serves as Community Relations Coordinator. This almost five-year project will be turned into a book containing photographs and stories and will be sold throughout the community. Proceeds will go towards scholarship for future Spuds graduate. Spud spirit is in Brian's DNA, and he uses those skills and talent to inspire Spud pride through the student body, through scheduling Spuddy mascot appearances, creating fun videos, and so many other creative ways. Paula Krogan, who nominated Brian, wrote in the nomination, "Mr. Cole is my children's orchestra teacher. He could, however, be called Mr. Morehead for all the positive promotion he does for our great city. He is at all sorts of extracurricular events, not only musicals but athletics cheering on the Spuds. He attends all home football games, takes his bike to greet track kids running for practice, and hands out treats, helps with the theater in town, including FMCT. He has been at a community speaking event during COVID called Leading the Conversation, and he also takes students to Minneapolis to play the National Anthem at the Twins Games and to compete in competitions, but demands that they must be good citizens by using the rapport he builds with them all year. Not only does he want an award-winning orchestra, which he has, but for each of his students to be happy, healthy citizens showing kindness and respect. He remembers details about each student, and he is just a terrific role model for our students and our community. So Morehead thanks you, Mr. Cole, for everything that you do, staying active and engaged with our young children and other residents through your inspiration and fostering the continuity of Morehead's collective story." So I see the mayor in the corner, and she wants to give you the award. So please come forward, Mr. Cole.
I don't have anything prepared, but people say, you know, your home is where your story is. And for the last 25 years, Morehead is where I've lived, and my wife and I have raised our three children. And this is very humbling and very nice. I think all of us know what a lucky thing we have going for us here in our community. And it's my honor to be just a small part of this community that brings pride to our
Mr. Cole has done is really embrace the hockey culture also. And so everybody in sixth grade, I believe, gets to get a hockey jersey for the Morehead
brand and our community and, of course, our schools. So I'm thankful to know most of you up in the council and over at that table.
Orchestra. They get to pick their number, put their whatever name they want.
So thank you very much, Mayor. It means a lot.
They don't have to use their own last name on the back.
And I think your jersey looks great, by the way.
And then their senior year, if they're still in orchestra, they get to wear it at their
So, thanks. Thank you, everyone.
senior orchestra, the All-City Orchestra Event. Some of the larger, the boys, as they've gotten larger, their jerseys fit quite interestingly when they are seniors in high school, if they don't order it a little bigger. So this is my sons, I think. My sons or my daughters, I don't know. One of them. So I felt like I needed to wear it in recognition of Mr. Cole. So with that, I'm going to turn the next presentation over to Mr. Paulson, the Director of the Fargo-Morehead Diversion Authority.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council, and thank you for spending some time with me tonight. I just have a few for-year information items from the diversion authority, and I want to certainly engage with any questions that you might have for any upcoming changes that we are instituting. So I'll give just a bit of a brief history lesson. I'll try to be fast so we can get Lisa to the school board. But so the City of Morehead, well, not contracted, but signed a joint powers agreement with Fargo, Cass County, Clay County, and the Cass Joint Water Resource District, forming the Joint Powers Authority, which is the diversion authority. And so any changes to that, I feel like I need to come before all the member entities and talk about those changes prior to them being instituted. So that's the reason why I'm here today. And we're not really talking about any whole-scale changes to the JPA. What we're talking about here is changing some of the committees to direct them more towards implementation versus project development. Since we've moved into full-scale construction, the diversion authority board has determined that our committee makeups need to change a little bit to be more efficient. So currently, right now, the JPA defines a finance committee, a lands committee, and a public outreach committee, as well as an agricultural committee. And the City of Morehead has board members on each one of those committees. Those committees make recommendations related to policy to the diversion authority board. And so they really kind of deal with a lot of the policymaking before it gets to the board, and we've seen a lot of great success and a lot of great recommendations from those committees over the years. However, as we move forward into implementation, the board has determined that the agricultural committee, which hasn't met in three years, really doesn't serve a purpose anymore. One of the reasons for that is because we've been able to institute mitigation programs related to agriculture and the agricultural producers that are impacted by the project. And we've really been able to work with that group and find resolution to all their needs. And so there just really isn't a need for the agricultural committee to meet any longer. And so the board intends to dissolve that committee at the upcoming meeting. The other committee is the public outreach committee, and we're not getting rid of the public outreach committee per se, but we're changing the responsibilities into a new committee called the planning committee that really will be more comprehensive and not only just focus on public outreach, but really focus on any major policy initiatives that the diversion authority board feels necessary to deal with. So the changes, I guess, to put it plainly, the changes will be the dissolution of the public outreach committee and the agricultural committee, and then the setup of a new committee called the planning committee. We're leaving the finance committee alone, so really we'll move forward with finance and planning. And then the lands committee has really kind of subsided quite a bit over the last year, hasn't really been meeting. They've only been meeting to get updates. And so we are going to suspend the lands committee unless there's a policy item that needs to be discussed. Then we will call the lands committee forward to deal with that issue. But this new setup is really going to be more efficient for us. We'll have one less committee meeting on a monthly basis, and we really feel, or the board feels like this is going to be more value and a better operation moving forward. So with that, I'll just open it up to any questions that the council might have, certainly available for anything, doesn't have to be related to the committees.
All right, thank you, Mr. Paulson. I do have one comment, and maybe you could just provide a little bit of background information on this. And I apologize if you said it and I just didn't catch it. But as far as land management, the two entities in North Dakota and Minnesota that will be also overseeing it, do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I think that's an important point. So right now, the land is acquired on the North Dakota side by the Cass County Joint Water Resource District and the Minnesota side by the Morehead-Clay County Joint Powers Authority. Those two entities are going to continue to operate the way they do. Most of the policy guidance from the board has been resolved, and so that's been given to those two entities for land acquisition. We do have a very robust land mitigation program that addresses pretty much everything under the sun. Over the last decade, we've heard the concerns of the impacted folks to the project, and we've now been able to create programs that address each item that was their concern. So that is the principal job of the MCC JPA and the Cass County Joint in acquiring the land necessary for the footprint of the diversion project. If there is a need for them to deal with any policy-related items or if something comes up that doesn't fit within our mitigation programs, of course, we would call a land committee meeting and talk about those and send that recommendation to the full diversion authority board.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Any questions or comments from the council? None. Thank you so much, Mr. Paulson.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, moving on to 12A, which was moved up, and I believe that is Lisa Bodie.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And this item is the Make Morehead Home Property Tax Rebate Program. The program has been in place since the 2009 flood, essentially, and it was developed to, you know, address some market disparities that we had and also to compete with Fargo and West Fargo in that they have longstanding, since the 1980s, operated a property tax rebate program. And we bring it forward to the city, the county, and the school district every two years in order to, you know, make sure that you have an opportunity to see it from time to time. So it does have an intentional sunset. And if the program is not extended by the end of this calendar year, it would expire. We would still have two more years of obligations for the homes that have been constructed under the program, you know, up until this time. So there is still time to do that. We have provided a document that is in your packet that has some background on the program as well as metro and local Morehead housing starts. And, you know, at one point, we have talked about whether or not the program is necessary in the marketplace, and I've been thinking more about that question. Right now, over the last 10 years, Morehead has been capturing between 10% and 17% of the new housing units that have been constructed, and we're more like 25% of the metro area population. And so we aren't to that point where I believe that we would want to be the first ones out of the program, but of course, that is a policy decision. The program does have an expense, and that is the foregone tax revenue on the two years following completion of the residential home. But we have recaptured now so that every year that homes, you know, participate in the program, another year's worth of homes constructed under previous programs do, you know, bear taxes in perpetuity for the taxing jurisdictions. And so I think you're all familiar with the program and how it works. It is, it used to have an application process, and now it's automatically, you know, every homeowner, so that we don't miss anyone, receives the rebate through the process of the building permit and valuation following construction. That's a little bit of background, and we ask, we have a resolution in your packet that would effectuate you extending the program to December of 2024. And I'll be bringing a similar resolution, draft resolution, to the school board tonight and the county board tomorrow.
Thank you, Ms. Bodie. Any questions or comments from council members? Councilmember Dahlquist.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I would like to see this continued, like we do the incentive for new businesses, new construction. We get a lot of our taxes from citizens, and so giving them just the two-year, I think, is something that we should continue. And Morehead is growing, and two years is not a long time for us to wait until they start paying in, as compared to where the businesses are five, 10, and 15 years.
All right, any council member, White.
Thank you, Mayor. What I'm going to say is something that you probably won't be surprised at all, that I've said it before, is I really support, I fully support this, but I would like us to be doing more for existing homes so that we can provide some kind of incentive for people to fix up older houses, because not everybody can afford a new construction. And so as we're looking at making housing more affordable in our community and bringing in more families, that provides those opportunities for folks that might not otherwise be able to make Morehead their home. And it also would be beneficial to our downtown, you know, these older neighborhoods, if they were allowed to have some opportunities for families to come in here and invest in some of those homes that are starting to show their age, that it would benefit, you know, all of the work that we're doing in downtown revitalization. And I know that two years isn't long enough, and in fact, as you've pointed out, it could trigger somebody to have an assessment sooner, and that's actually a disincentive, because it would, you know, raise their taxes, even if it was abated for a while, but now they're at a higher level once that expires. But I know that in Fargo, they have a five-year exception for homes that are at least 40 years old. In West Fargo, they have a five-year exception if it's a 25-year-old house. And I've looked at other ones. Des Moines has a 10-year abatement program. And so I think having something that's targeted towards our older neighborhoods and, again, ties in with the Renaissance zones that we currently have would be really beneficial. And so I know I've said it a lot, but I just don't feel like we have made that next step of actually having those conversations. And I know you have some great ideas, too, of other things that we might do. So I'm just taking this opportunity to put it out there, because I really relish us having that conversation. I don't think it's neither or. I think we need this and we need some other things that will bring more families to our community. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments from the council related to the Make Morehead Home rebate? All right, seeing none, I would be looking for a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved. Deb White.
I'll second. Karun.
So White and Karun. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The resolution carries. Thank you, Ms. Bodie. All right, moving on to consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Lindos moves approval.
Second.
All right, Lindos approved, Selgevold seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Moving on to approval of meeting minutes from August 22, 2022. Do I have a motion to approve meeting minutes?
So moved. Deb White.
Second. Karun.
So White and Karun. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. And moving on to number seven, citizens addressing the council. Are there any citizens in the audience who wish to address the council? Okay, seeing no citizens wishing to address the council, we will move on to, let's see here, yep, number nine, public hearing regarding the request of Thad Thor'sness. Apologize for maybe not saying that right. On behalf of Thor Investments LLC for property tax exemption. And I would look for a motion to approve the public hearing portion of this agenda item.
Moved.
Second. Deb White.
So Selgevold moved, White second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the public hearing portion of this agenda item is open. I'll turn it over to you, Mr. LePointe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and Thad is with us here tonight. If you have any specific questions or if Thad wants to make some comments after I give a little presentation here. There has been even a brief change since the packet went out, so I want to make sure we clarify this. The project right now initially was planned for six new commercial buildings. That has now been updated to eight, so a total of 40 individual kind of businesses or individual shops that are going to be a part of this overall construction. So... All right, Lindas approved, Selgevold seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Moving on to approval of meeting minutes from August 22, 2022. Do I have a motion to approve meeting minutes?
So moved. Deb White. Second. Karun.
So White and Karun. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And moving on to number seven, citizens addressing the council. Are there any citizens in the audience who wish to address the council? Okay, seeing no citizens wishing to address the council, we will move on to, see here, yep, number nine, public hearing regarding the request of Thad Thorstness. Thorstness. Apologize for maybe not saying that right. On behalf of Thor Investments LLC for property tax exemption. And I would look for a motion to approve the public hearing portion of this agenda item.
Moved.
Second. Deb White.
So Selgevold moved, White second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the public hearing portion of this agenda item is open. I'll turn it over to you, Mr. LaPointe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and Thad is with us here tonight. If you have any specific questions or if Thad wants to make some comments after I give a little presentation here. There has been even a brief change since the packet went out, so I want to make sure we clarify this. The project right now initially was planned for six new commercial buildings. That has now been updated to eight, so a total of 40 individual kind of businesses or individual shops that are going to be a part of this overall construction. So even updating some of our numbers here, these are projects that Thad and Thor's Investments has done for the last number of years, and they've done very well with attracting a lot of different small-scale businesses within our community. We've seen them in our older industrial parks, and this is obviously a new area of Morehead that's being developed in a, quite frankly, an area that hasn't seen development in its history. So excited to see some projects happen and supporting some businesses here. So again, as a change, the plan is to construct eight new commercial buildings with five units in each building. These would be, again, leased for or sold to commercial businesses such as plumbers, builders, electricians, et cetera. Once constructed, this is what Thor Investments has done. They've anticipated condoizing these projects and ultimately looking to sell some of those out. If a sale happens, that incentive then trickles down to that business that ends up occupying that space. They do intend to meet all of our job requirements. Initial valuations, we're looking at about 6.6 million. That was based on six buildings, just based on raw estimates in my own mind. And at eight buildings, I'm thinking we're probably about an $8 million project, at least 7.5 million project. So our tax, our city assessor has already kind of estimated some of that. If approved here tonight, construction would begin this year yet, this fall, in October 2020, with the hope of being complete in July of 2023. Again, this is a part of our commercial industrial property tax incentive. We did make some changes as the last meeting. We changed some of our valuation amounts, which I'll get into in our next application. But right now, they do meet the 1.25 million or the $1 million old threshold of a five-year exemption. So we are seeking that recommendation here tonight of a five-year exemption for this project. With that, I know Thad's here. If you would like to say any few words or if there's questions for Thad as well.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. LaPointe. Since this is a public hearing portion of the agenda item, are there any members in the audience who wish to comment during the public hearing portion? All right, seeing none, I am looking for a motion to close the public hearing portion of this item.
So moved. Niesmeyer.
Second. Lindas.
Mayor motioned. Lindas seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the public hearing is closed, so are there any questions or comments from the council for either Mr. LaPointe or Mr. Thorstness, who is very kindly wearing Morehead Good strategy. All right, seeing none, I would be looking for a motion to approve the property tax exemption for Thor Investments.
So moved. Deb White. Second. Niesmeyer.
So White moved. Niesmeyer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Thorstness, and welcome to Morehead again. And I think the strategy was you wore orange, so very, very smart move on your part. All right, I'm looking to, for a motion to open the public hearing regarding the request of Jeremy McAdams on behalf of Mc...
Macpine.
Macpine Stravage LLC for property tax exemption.
So moved. Niesmeyer. Second. Karun.
Niesmeyer and Karun. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the public hearing is open, and I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. LaPointe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a project, Macpine Savage LLC, which councilmember Gilbertson grabbed me before the meeting. I will clarify, this LLC actually is their land and building holder, so the same owner, Jeremy McAdams, owns Four Seasons Handyman and the subsequent businesses that are going in here. So it is all one entity with just a multiple LLCs involved here. But this is a land sale that we recently had in our McCarr Industrial Park on the southeast side of the park near 34th Avenue South. The project itself is to plan to construct a multi-tenant commercial building with three units. Again, I mentioned some of the businesses, Four Seasons Handyman, Four Seasons Contracting, Four Seasons Insulation, and Prokurb. So those are the businesses that are looking to go in here. This is, again, raw land in our industrial park that we've been eagerly waiting to see develop, so we're excited to process this. And I will note here, estimated valuation from the city assessor is about $930,000. This application did come before those changes were made to the minimum threshold. We have made an obligation that if this project then does come in, once it's built over the million-dollar mark, that we would honor that five-year exemption from what the policy was when the application was made. So that is one point of clarification here. If approved here tonight, construction again would begin this October with the hope of completing in July of 2023, so similar timeline to Thad's project as well. This is zoned appropriately and looking forward to seeing some growth in our industrial park. So happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, since this is public hearing portion, again, I'm just asking if there's any members in the audience who wish to comment? All right, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion to close the public hearing portion of this item.
So moved. Niesmeyer.
Lindas will second.
To Niesmeyer and Lindas. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the public hearing portion is closed. Are there any questions or comments from the council for Mr. LaPointe? If not, I would be looking for a motion to approve a property tax exemption for Macpine Stravage. Strav... I'm not saying that right. Stravage? Okay.
Lindas will remove approval.
White seconds.
To Lindas and White. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. LaPointe.
Thank you.
Those are the public hearings? Oh, no, we are, okay. All right, turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the next item on the agenda is really looking to approve an amendment to the redevelopment plan for the Days Inn Redevelopment Tax Increment Financing Plan and Related Master Development Agreement for Compass Apartments. Brian Bachman with Enclave is here if you have any specific questions about the project. Again, a little history here, this is no stranger to much of our conversation over the last year. This has been a project that we've been working on for many, many months. Working with Enclave, who's been such a great partner, as most of us have seen, the old hotel is now demolished. We've been working with Brian and his team on just project cost increases and other kind of scenarios that have came up over the last number of months. Ultimately, what's happening here and what's in front of us tonight is due to some of those increased costs and some of the private financing securities, we are looking, or Enclave is looking to phase the project itself. So it was initially going to be one phase, one large project, over 200 units that would go on that site. What we are bringing forward here is a two-phased approach. The first phase would be 93 units, which would be on the east side of the existing property. And then the hope and desire would be within probably 18 months, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, within 18 months, we'd see the second phase of that project happen, which would be basically to the west of this first phase. So it mimics the same shape and same kind of design concept of what the initial project would be, except for it would be two separate buildings rather than one large building that would come into play. There's really, and working with Baker Tilly and working with city attorney John Shockley, there's really not much risk to the city for this change in itself. Our increment remains very similar, especially if they do the second project. Our term value does not change, it's 18 years. And really, the hope is that Enclave will start that second phase to be able to maximize some of their increment that they do, and obviously with the demolition costs that they're trying to get back as well. So what we are looking is authorization for the city manager and city attorney John Shockley to finalize the TIF plan and the TIF master development agreement. We'd have some changes to those language within those documents and see this project move forward here yet this fall. With that, again, Brian's here. I'm here to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Mr. LaPointe. Any questions or comments from councilmember Gilbertson?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Derek, it's a good night when you stand there for quite a while with multiple projects. Appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
My only question on the TIF would be if it's 40% built now and 60% in 18 months, is it... Is the TIF then incremented?
So, I mean, really, the risk is like we're only paying about what is being generated, what is being built. So right now, we're really locked into what that first phase is. So the onus is on Enclave to build more, to be able to gain back more of that increment for the redevelopment. So right now, there's really not a lot of liability on the city based on the phased approach. The onus is really on Enclave to make sure that this project goes forward in both phases. That makes sense.
So worst-case scenario, he doesn't get a second phase built, so the finance would just be on what was built.
Correct.
Right? And then what he loses out on the 18 months or 24 months of the total TIF.
Correct.
Because it's 18 years, you said?
Correct.
It's 18 years on the whole project, not 18 years on phase one and then 18 on phase two, right?
That's correct.
So he has the incentive to build.
Yeah, and because the property, so we had this question earlier in the EDA, because the district, the certified district of the tax increment financing is the entire site, you can't just alter that out, you can't just cut that out and create new projects on it. That's already been certified, so you really can't make a whole lot of alters to that kind of area. Their incentive is to build within the whole entire project area within the terms that we've established.
And thank you as well, Enclave. Let's, when's the, when's the one going to be open that you're, our building?
The Emery one?
Yeah.
So, yeah, yeah, we'll take, we'll take the belt, we'll take the belt. And thank you for being willing to talk about what's not on the agenda, but go ahead.
No, sure. Right now, it looks like, I've heard February and I've heard December, so I think it depends on who you ask in our office. So soon, it's starting to close in on.
Other questions or comments for either Derek or Brian? Councilmember White.
Thank you, Mayor. And I know we talked about this in our EDA meeting today, and I just wanted to say I support this, and I also think it's important that we are flexible and send a message, not just because we have a great partner here that we've been working with, with Enclave, but also to the other folks, because we've seen all this growth happening, and I think it's important that we let those partners know that we're with them, not just when things are going well, but when we hit some bumps in the road. And so if we can be a little flexible now so that we can all kind of weather some of these difficulties together, then I think that it will help us in the future to continue in the path that we're following and continue to see the growth that we're having in Morehead. So thanks.
Thank you, councilmember White. Any other comments or questions? And I think flexible and also reasonable, too. I think it's reasonable to work with you on this, too. I know that I rest better at night knowing that incredibly horrible swimming pool is not in existence anymore with the water that had been there.
Have pictures if you, if you need.
I do not want to see the pictures, but thank you for the offer. With that, I would be looking for a motion to approve this amendment.
So moved. Deb White.
Oop, second. Niesmeyer.
So White motion, Niesmeyer seconded. Any further comments or questions? Mr. LaPointe.
Can I just add, too? I just think councilmember White's point is just, is very well taken, because I think what we've been hearing, and I think it's worth pointing out here, is development is difficult. It's been difficult before, but it's even more difficult in the environment that we're in. And again, great partners like Enclave and others that we've been working with lately, our ability to work with folks and understand that, you know, we will get through it, but everything's taking about double the amount of time of what it used to take. So we're just trying to be focused and diligent in our process as well. So we appreciate that comment and grateful for willing partners as well.
Right, any further questions or comments? So I have a motion on the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bachman. Look forward to having you come back again in orange. All right. I think we are down to mayor and council reports. Any councilmembers have reports? Councilmember White?
Thank you. I think I'll just take a minute to remind people, if they're interested in joining an event for Greater Morehead Days on Saturday, we've got the Red River Run at MB Johnson Park, and it's a trail run, and it will raise funds for the inclusive playground.
All right, thank you. And councilmember Lindas.
So I've been participating in the League of Minnesota Cities, which is our nonpartisan advocacy group of all the cities in Minnesota. And I mean, we just had the last of our meetings for the Improving Service Delivery Subcommittee that Fire Protection. And in fact, we were considering new policy statements on expungement of criminal records, misdemeanors, and cannabinoids, because that needs to be something that gets addressed so cities can actually effectively create ordinances and also fundraising authority. And besides making changes to existing recommendations, all this is done to try to advocate and get policies that give more local control to cities. And it's good to see that everyone is on that same page at these, at these, at these meetings.
Thank you, councilmember Lindas. Councilmember Hendrickson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just with Morehead Public Service, the Morehead Public Service Commission will hold a public hearing to consider changes in electric and water rates in Morehead. The public hearing will be held on Tuesday, October 18, 2022, at 5:30, and that will be right in here. And for, and it's listed on their, on their webpage, so if you want to look more in depth, that'd be great, but for, they're looking at between a 0 and 4% hike for electric rates and between 2 and 5% for water rates, so. So again, that'll be on October 18, 2022, at 5:30. And with those, with the rates, you know, it could be anywhere from 0 and then from electric rates, 2 to 5. It's remarkable in this environment that you were able to keep them so low, so I'm proud of the Morehead Public Service Commission and the commissioners and Director Schmidt. So, thanks.
Councilmember Niesmeyer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had the pleasure on September 1st to meet with the Clay County Intergovernmental Committee and give a presentation on Yes 56560. I know we've got some big news and a half-cent tax on our ballot coming up, and it was also really great to meet with the Community Facilities Task Force and get some updates on the public health, new detox center that is increasing beds for our committee, community from 16 to 32. That's really a great mental health increase. We've seen a rise in opioid support needed in our community and being to increase holding individuals who are struggling with drug overdoses up to 36 hours so they can wait for a bed to open for treatment, I think is a really wonderful thing that Clay County is doing. We also got an update on the high school, which I think is pretty great that our governmental agencies can get together and we can get updates. You know, the new high school section, phase one, opening in August 2023, you know, is pretty great. And of course, as we just heard from Derek LaPointe, is that things are taking a lot of time. And so even as the city, we're looking at doing lots of things, I know that, that date that we heard at that facilities update, to sort of know, like, mm, that might not happen. And we've got a lot of great things coming up. Bridge Bash is another one of those Greater Morehead Days things coming up. I will be there with the Yes 56560 materials. I'd love to see people there. It is coming up Saturday, this Saturday, at 1 o'clock. I'd love to see people come out and ask a whole bunch of questions about things that we've got coming up. So stop out on Saturday and say hi. I'd love to see you.
All right, any other councilmembers? Councilmember Gilbertson.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I just want to state that we're getting some emails on bow hunting up in Oakport Township, and that is owned by the Buffalo Red River Watershed District, and it's their decision, sounds like it was their decision not to allow hunting this year and not the city of Morehead. Thanks.
Any other councilmembers? Okay, with that, I will give... Okay, with that, I will give a mayor update. I don't believe that... Last time, we talked about the fact that we had Morehead Employee Appreciation Day, which was really a fantastic opportunity for all of us here to be able to kind of give back to the 280 full-time, and I don't even know how many part-time employees that work for this great city, because they're the ones who really do the work. We are... We come and we go to meetings, but they're the ones who are actually cleaning the streets, fighting the fires, responding to the 911 calls, answering the phones and engineering and all of that. And it was really fantastic to be able to finally revive that Employee Appreciation Day, which we had started prior to COVID. And it was fun, and we lucked out and had a great day. Also, there was a chamber event on August 24th. The Fargo-Morehead Chamber of Commerce had an event where they were celebrating a $9.6 million workforce grant that was received to really help focus on workforce issues in the Fargo-Morehead community. Senator Smith from Minnesota was there, along with Governor Burgum, who both spoke. And I'm looking forward to some really exciting opportunities for the communities, particularly with our career academy and how that will work in conjunction with this grant. Later that same day, a number of us met with Senator Smith in regards to clean energy in a roundtable. Members of Morehead Public Service were also there, and we discussed some of the resiliency strategies that we have been looking at here in Morehead and sustainability issues. And it was a really great opportunity to just kind of visit in a less formal setting with Senator Tina Smith. Also, that day, I was at a dunk tank. I'm not going to get into that, because it was somewhat of a horrible experience, but it was very cold that night. But we raised money for Trinity Lutheran Church. Also have been doing a number of presentations for the Yes 56560. To date, from August 22nd, when the first presentation was, to just this morning at the EDA, there have been seven presentations done throughout the community to different community groups, the city council and the county board. And there's also been seven events where community members and several council members have also staffed a table providing information around the half-cent sales tax for the community center library. So, if, you know, of other entities that wish presentation, would like to have a presentation or would like to have a table at an event, just you can contact me. I seem to be the contact person, but I am not doing all of it, because there is absolutely no way. So, I appreciate all the people who are, and several of the council members are doing that as well. The last thing I wanted to mention, or actually two more things. I did get an email today, people asking more information around the downtown development project. And just a reminder that that... Or that website is moretomoorhead.com, and a lot of the information can be found there, so if you want to disseminate that information out for people who may have forgotten about it since that presentation was over a month ago now. And then lastly, there's another somewhat scary event for me. I'm going to be participating in a fundraiser for breast cancer awareness called Bras Off-Broadway. I am not wearing a bra in public. I will be wearing a corset that is already decorated with images from around the City of Morehead. And Kinjori is kind of our local artist from Morehead who's going to be doing that. So, that is October 13th at 7:00 PM. I've seen what she has prepared, and it's absolutely stunning and obviously a work of art, as she is just an incredible artist. So, hopefully, we will have a lot of Morehead businesses that will be bidding on that and helping to raise a lot of money for breast cancer awareness, as it's an important issue to me. I had two aunts pass away from breast cancer. So, with that, that is my report, and I'll turn it over to you, City Manager Molly.
Thank you, Mayor. So, this is Greater Morehead Days. The week is going on. There's all kinds of activities, so encourage folks to go online, cityofmorehead.com, and you can find all of these activities. But I did want to... On Saturday, it gets... There's a lot going on. There's the Red River Run at 9:00 AM. Bridge Bash starts at 1:00 and goes throughout the afternoon in Vikingship Park at the EMCOM Center. And then Inclusive Moreheads hosting a day of play from 3:30 to 6:30 at Gooseberry Park, where there's all kinds of activities. So, just things happening throughout the day. And it's been fun to hear people talk about different things, whether it's the medallion hunt or the excursions on the Red River, Midwest Kids Fest, which is happening tonight, cakewalks. I mean, it just goes on and on. So, there's that. And then I just want to mention, during the conversation about Make Morehead Home, the initiatives there, I heard you, Councilmember White, talking about, you know, preserving and renovating older existing affordable housing stock in Morehead. And, you know, although it's a tough nut to crack, challenges in these older neighborhoods, these are homes that will never build again. So, challenge accepted. I don't know what that looks like, but you can expect more. We'll keep trying to figure it out.
All right. With that, we are going into executive session tonight. So, if I could get a motion to go into executive session?
Say, Mayor?
Yes.
May I interrupt? Could I interrupt the order of this executive session?
Yes.
If possible. We have three items. We'd like to move the labor negotiations to first on the agenda.
Okay, so we will move labor negotiations first. Do I just go into closing exec... Do I read all of them, City Attorney Shockley?
Madam Mayor, you could, in the... Ask for a motion that would just approve the three executive sessions as listed on the agenda.
Okay. So, that is what I'm asking for.
So move, Nisa Meyer.
So, Nisa Meyer and White seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we are in executive session now.
I do now, yeah. I didn't. Matt was in Scream Choir. He's gonna be in a community theater play.
Ask him if I'm...
Deb, or Mike, do you want to check to see if Deb is out there or have her come in? All right, it is 7:37. We are back from executive session. One of the items that was discussed was a labor agreement and a memorandum of understanding between the city of Morehead and the International Association of Firefighters. And we have, I believe, come to a resolution to approve that agreement. So at this point in time, I am looking for a motion to approve the labor agreement and memorandum of understanding between the city of Morehead and the International Association of Firefighters, local 1323 firefighters and captains.
So move Niesmeyer?
Lindas will second.
So Niesmeyer and Lindas. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. All right, with that, we are on to new business. Do we have any new business? City Manager Molly?
There is no new business tonight, mayor.
All right, so with that, at 7:38, we are adjourned. Good night, Morehead.